Hello.
Howdy. Can everybody hear me?
I can hear you.
Alright, good, good. That means we're good. Gabby looks like she's outside, which is nice. Alright, Jill.
Hello.
Hey.
Can you hear me?
Hi.
It's Larry with a haircut. Who can hear me?
I can hear you.
You can hear me, alright. Then I'm doing good. Can you hear me? Gabrielle, can you hear me? I don't know, hon. I'm gonna hang the phone down, set it down.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, still in echo.
Hopefully this is our last one of these.
Hopefully.
There he is.
Dan, how you doing?
I don't know if they can see us. We can see them.
Dan, can you hear me?
I can hear everybody.
Good.
Good. Okay, I'm still working this out.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
I don't know why it keeps showing the phone. It stays like that, like his picture.
Can you hear me now, Damon?
I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yup.
Looking for the site map. Is that where you're cutting it off? Yeah, she's looking for him. The realtor. Somebody should help him.
We're having trouble. Is anybody else hearing that noise? Alright, so I'm not the only one. Alright.
Yeah, I hear too.
I don't know why it keeps showing, like, going like that. That's this guy? He's the admin. He just joined Gary.
Gary and John just joined. I see them.
These people are just joining. Sixteen participants. Kerry Morgen. Michael Berry. B-E-R-E-R-E. Is that like the Terry? It's not spelled R-E. Maybe. Can't see him. Is that him?
There he is, yeah.
How you doing?
Oh, his beard, dude.
Wow.
Hey Gabby. Gabby? Can you hear me?
Who me?
Asking Gabby if she's recording us.
I can hear you. Everybody's echoing. There's strange noises going on and I can't figure out how to get everybody on my screen at once.
Gabrielle's the one who sent me to start.
Should be up in the right, upper right-hand corner.
And Slario.
So try muting everyone.
That's what I'm gonna do right now.
Larry, I like your haircut.
I asked everybody to go on mute unless you were speaking. Maybe that'll stop everyone.
Waiting to see Alan sign in. Oh shoot, how would they do?
Do you guys hear echoing or is it just me?
I think it's you.
Okay, so maybe something's up on my idea.
You're getting a lot of feedback. We're hearing a lot of feedback.
Yeah, yeah.
Might be this guy. Who's that?
Yeah, I want to say.
Yep. Nothing else to do. Gabby, this one, she's the one running it. Me personally, I think you should do one of the talks and get them done.
Before I start this meeting, I need everyone to mute themselves. Can you do that? Otherwise we're getting too much feedback. There is a way where you can set it up to just push the space bar as a push-to-talk button. You can try that. Larry, can you mute yourself?
I am.
No.
Okay. Okay. How do I mute?
Are you on an iPad?
No, I'm on my...
Up in the upper right-hand corner of your... There's the blue button. You should be able to mute yourself.
Hold on, I muted.
No, no.
Gary, I think he's also dialed in with his phone.
Yeah, because we can still hear him. Yeah, we can still hear you, Larry. So I think that's... Yeah, because you're dialed in with your phone.
Feedback is so bad.
Okay. That's probably why we're getting the feedback. It's better now. Okay. I'd like to call the June 9th meeting of the Town of Ulster Planning Board to Order via Zoom. Could stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance if you would join me. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, mute.
And we could do a roll call.
Mr. Senior? Mr. Homquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker? Mr. Furman? You all here?
I'm sorry, it's here.
Hi guys, I'm sorry I'm late.
Okay, gotcha, Anna. Mr. Decker, Mr. Furman, Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Babalas? Mr. Jababas? There. And Chairman Molligan.
Here.
So we have a quorum.
President. Hear me.
Not sure who that is.
Did you send them enough?
Finally, we have our challenges tonight with the audio, so we're gonna have to bear with us. Has every board member had a chance to look at last month's minutes?
Yes.
Okay, are there any deletions or corrections? Hearing none? Can I have a motion to accept last month's minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, for a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Larry. Always in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. I'd also like to take this opportunity to welcome David Church. David will be our new consultant planner, replacing Alan. Welcome, David.
Thank you. Hi. Hello.
And just wanted to say thank...
Meet you all in.
Hopefully maybe next month.
Very good.
And of course, I just want to thank Alan Sorensen for his ten-plus years of work with the Town of Ulster Planning Board. Alan is the consummate professional. And I've enjoyed working with him immensely. I wish you all the best, Alan. First item of all business is Twin Creeks, major subdivision. Tonight, we are going to just discuss the change in the site plan. And Alan, if you are here, would you like to just summarize what the changes are?
Hi Gary. Yeah, we, through some extensive research with our attorney and so forth, we nailed down where the right-of-way was that came to light or came up for discussion during the public hearing last, I think, almost a year ago. And so we moved the one cul-de-sac road to follow the right-of-way so that we wouldn't obstruct, the right-of-way wouldn't be going through somebody's yard or something like that, the right-of-way would follow the road. So that was, we moved the southern cul-de-sac road to match where the right-of-way would fall. So that was the change in the land plan. It's still 21 lots. The septic areas remain the same except for one. It's already been back through the Ulster County Health Department. They're ready to go with it. We have to get preliminary approval before they'll issue their approval.
Okay. I noticed in the, one of the renditions, there was some green areas. I assume, is that stormwater or is that stormwater runoff reserve area or?
Yes, those are areas to address the stormwater.
Yeah, okay, that's worked out.
And they'll remain now as part of the association property. We have them labeled, the roads and those two areas will be owned by the homeowners or property owners association.
Okay. It's still gonna be a private road, I assume, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Alright. Alan, any comments? I know you're here, Alan. I don't...
I'm not seeing him anymore.
Yeah, he's there. You need to unmute yourself, Alan, if you can.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, gotcha.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
So back in 2008, there was a 21-lot subdivision that was approved on this site. There was a secret next deck that was adopted. After the 2008 crash, the... The property owner actually went back to the county after filing the maps and...
Continue.
So Alan Lord and his company came in to, you know, bring, renew, not renew, but come forth with a proposal to, again, subdivide the property into 21 lots. And they have... We had the, they came in originally with the exact same lot layout that was proposed in 2008. Then we had the preliminary public hearing about a year ago. There was... Residents brought up the concerns with the deeded right-of-way. As Mr. Lord just explained, they've amended the preliminary subdivision plat so that the roads coincide with those right-of-ways. That is where this application is. Because the major subdivision requires two public hearings. I think the first question for the board is to look at this revised subdivision plat. I recommend that they review it with the, with David as well as Dennis Slarios and then make a determination of whether it's, you know, ready for scheduling the final plat public hearing. So this, I guess I could share my screen and kind of show you what was originally proposed and what is currently proposed, if you'd like me to do that.
Yeah, that would be great. Thanks.
Okay. So can you see, this is the current proposed subdivision layout. Can everyone see that? Okay, so I actually, I got a little crazy with the pens there, but this is, this little section here where I have the arrow moving around, that's actually part of the deeded right-of-way as well, that little segment. And so these are the cul-de-sacs that are proposed. And then this is the extension of the deeded right-of-way that's on the map. This is the Asofas Creek here. And this is Clattico Creek, hence the name Twin Creeks. This is a 90-foot-wide easement that's provided within HOA. And I'm just gonna scroll down and, so again, it's 21 lots. They're still proposing 21 lots. In 2008, this is the subdivision plat that was approved. So in that subdivision plat, at the time, there were actually three drainage parcels that were proposed that would have been deeded to the town. So the distinction between this, the current proposed action and the subdivision plat that was approved back in 2008, it's a slight realignment of the cul-de-sacs and the removal of these drainage parcels that were, back in 2008, were being considered to be conveyed to the town. We did receive a letter from the Ulster County Highway Department. They are okay with the current proposed access. They do require preliminary plat approval before they issue the permits for that. The applicant is going back before the Health Department to secure septic system design approvals. And they've provided additional well log information that I recommend, you know, be thoroughly reviewed by the town designated engineer.
Alright. So that's basically, I believe, the action we can take tonight. Unless any members have questions of Alan while he's here? Alan Lord, that is. Alan, any questions? Alan Lord, any questions you have from us?
No, I guess, I'm just curious if anyone sees an issue with changing that one road from the original plan to the current plan. That's really all we're looking to square away. That's really all we're looking to square away.
Right. Yeah, I don't see any issue.
I think the board is ready. I can speak up?
Andrew, go ahead.
No. My name is Ezra Muller. I live on Doris Lane, abutting the property.
Well, Mr., Ezra, I'm sorry. There will be-
I'm here with my mother.
Alright, there will be another hearing. Tonight, we're not taking public comments. This was just an update from the applicant regarding this project. So there will be, there will be another public hearing scheduled here, probably within two months. And hopefully, in public, I mean, in the town hall, where we have much better circumstances here to hear people and to conduct the public hearing.
Okay. So I was unsure of what was voted on tonight, because-
Yeah, nothing, there's, nothing's being voted on. This is just another application, excuse me, another appearance by the applicant to just further explain the project. And as you might have heard, he's just changing some of the roadways to accommodate a right-of-way.
Yeah, and that's, and that's myself. I'm the owner of right-of-ways.
Yeah, okay, so that's been addressed, and it's going to be addressed by the town engineer also.
Gary, good evening. It's Councilman Kitchen.
Yes, Councilman. Go ahead.
I was just calling because Mr. Muller was supposed to be, wants to be notified by email or mail that these meetings are taking place with the planning board, so he could be involved and let his voice be heard. So I just want to make sure that he'll be contacted as a neighboring property owner moving forward to when these meetings are gonna take place, sir.
Okay. We'll certainly take care of that. Gabrielle?
Who was that meeting for?
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Chairman.
You're welcome. Alright, let's move on to the next item of business, which is Johnson Route 28, major subdivision. Actually, let me back up. I do need a, I do need a motion to refer this to the town engineers.
I'll make that motion, but can I please ask that everyone mute their, it's really hard to hear everybody.
Yeah, I agree. I think some of that issue is people are calling in for the audio portion, and they are, they are not muted. They're live, so we're picking up a lot of feedback, unfortunately.
A lot, and it's hard to hear when someone talks.
Right. Okay, so if I could have a motion to refer the-
I'll make that motion, Gary.
... layup to the town engineers. Okay, second?
I'll quizz here. I'll second that.
Alright. Motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Alright, thank you. Let's move on to Johnson Route 28.
Hi, good evening, everybody. So should I share my screen, or?
Yes, if you could. Sure, thanks.
I gotta map up.
Aye.
Great, so hopefully you can see my screen now. Through the last, I'm sorry, I must figure if I can zoom out a little bit. I can't figure that out here. So I think I've got the meat of it here up on the screen. We last were in front of the board, I believe it was the January meeting, where the board had asked that we fix an encroachment with the neighboring property over on this right side. So we adjusted the maps since the last meeting to delete this lot line right here that my mouse is going over, and adding this new lot line to repair a site plan encroachment with the neighboring property. We have been working towards this lot line revision to repair the ownership boundaries between all of the buildings. The Johnson Ford building, as you can see here, the previous lot line ran right across the front of the building, as well as, this is the former Central Hudson building, the lot line ran about 50 feet off of the front of the building. And we are fixing that and repairing the lot lines to better match the utilization of the property. So we've redrawn the lot lines to show again and accommodate the utility of the parcels as opposed to the antiquated lot lines that this campus has evolved from over the last 40 years. So we're kind of cleaning up the property lines. This will give cleaner tax bills. So when the landlord bills each of the individual tenants, the tax bills will reflect, again, the utilization of the property. Currently, when the tax bill goes out to, like, Johnson Ford, they pay, or the Ford, French, current Ford franchisee, it, they get that tax bill and, like, 16% of the Camping World parcel, because the Camping World parcel covers everything, including all of the frontage up to Route 28. Part of this is, we are working on and have a final draft of a road maintenance agreement. We'll be submitting, hopefully, here in the next week for Jason's review. And I believe those were all of my open items for this review.
Okay, thank you. Alan, comments?
No comments, that was easy.
Yeah. This is certainly not easy, this format, that's for sure.
Yeah, no, it's not.
It's very awkward.
Okay.
There he is.
There you are.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry about that. Alright, so this, I think this matter is, will be straightforward. It's, there's been a lot of moving parts over the last year as Paul's worked to get all the pieces together. And I think he's done an effective job of that. I had received the lot line adjustment application for Relax 845 that you submitted. I discussed this a little bit with Jason Kovacs before the meeting. Really, we need to look at this as one action, so even though there's various property owners, as long as we have the consent of all the involved property owners, this should just be treated as one, you know, major re-subdivision, basically showing everything that you show on this map, Paul. And actually, it might be easier if Val would have been on that, or, I don't know if you can hear me?
I can hear you, if what were on the map.
Can you zoom out on that map? If not, I can, so I can, I'll just-
Why don't you, I'll stop the screen share, because I've got it open in my browser, not in a PDF viewer, so.
Okay, so, yeah, I'll pull it up. Let me share the screen.
It's a large file, so it's probably showing up that way.
There we go. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, so, you know, what was before us included everything, everything on this side of this line. And so now we have this little additional lot line deletion and adjustment here. But overall, the proposed action is, you know, a major re-subdivision of all these parcels. It's more than three lots, that's why it's classified as such. And so moving forward, Paul, that's, we just need to look at it as one action. Because this boundary line adjustment is technically with a proposed lot that doesn't currently exist yet, so we need to look at it as a whole.
Okay, so however you want to do it, you've got two applications, so if you want it to be one, I don't think we'd have to do anything to the first application, but-
Right, it just needs to be one application. We just need to consent of all the property owners that are involved. And I think it's, from there, it's pretty straightforward. You're not, nothing's being constructed. As you pointed out, this lot reconfiguration of the lots makes a lot more sense, better aligns with the existing businesses that are out there. I believe there was a road maintenance agreement that you're working on, so we need that. And so I would ask, you know, that you just update the environmental assessment form to reflect, I'm gonna call it the current proposed action, and that you just move forward as one application involving everything that you see on this plan.
Okay. So am I ready for a conditional final approval pending the road maintenance agreement?
Uh, no.
No?
Um, because it's a major re-subdivision, it requires two public hearings. Jason, I'll need to defer to you, because this is, the boundary of this has changed, which leads me to think that we need to redo the, a preliminary, I think we still need two public hearings, a preliminary and a final.
Alan, I think you're right. We would have to start the process over with two public hearings, yes.
So the good news is, though, I think you've worked out all the changes, which was the hard part. Process-wise, moving forward from here, you know, the board could schedule the preliminary public hearing for its next meeting to get that started, pending, you know, receipt of the revised AF. And then, you know, you know, it's over two months, you can have your public hearings conducted. The board should just take a few minutes to study this. Maybe just treat this as a sketch plan at this point, and if you accept the proposed layout, you know, that's the only action I think you could take tonight.
Okay, so board members, any questions of the applicant regarding the new sketch plan? Larry, are you, I can't hear you. Gabby, can you unmute him?
Which is Larry?
He's admin.
Can you hear me now?
Can now, yes.
Yes.
And our last meeting? It's not working good. Warren had a question as to the boundaries. Larry, is your phone still on? My, I'm, I'm- Going through my phone, yes.
Yes, the problem.
You're also on the computer. You can probably hang the phone up.
You probably hang the phone up.
Gabby, you can mute his phone also.
Can you hear me? Yep. Can you hear me now?
Larry, is your phone off? Did you hang up?
No, I believe he asked, he said Warren had questions as to the boundaries of them.
Hello? Can you hear you?
Hi, Larry.
No, I don't know. I apologize.
Warren, can you speak to the question?
Yeah. Warren, you had a question?
Can you hear me now?
Go ahead, Warren.
So the only issues I had was with Campers World about the fact that they never came to the planning board. I approached them, that was probably four months ago, and I haven't heard back about their site plan changes. So I guess I'm gonna have to go back to them and find out how they want to proceed.
Okay. So Warren, I said that I can help with that, and I had asked if you could give me a letter. I believe we're down to, the painting issue was resolved, so I think we were down to, or the color issue was resolved. So I believe we were down to the flagpole and the non-shielded lighting being the issues that were still open, correct?
That is correct, and as every project like this I deal with, they had to run it up to corporate, and corporate did not respond.
Right. So, you know, again, I think you approached and talked to a local manager. If I have a letter, I can take another avenue and help you in that pursuit.
I will generate that letter as soon as possible. You have to understand that I've been tasked with most of the reopening of businesses in the town.
Understood, understood. When you're ready, like I said, I can, I can help you and bring them, get them to come in and work their compliance, and, you know, we agree on the lighting. I don't fully understand what the code was on the flagpole, but you can have them address that also.
I would appreciate that, since there's only me and no one else.
Yep, understood. So again, a simple letter, just so that I can get it from Paul Johnson's attorney to Camping World's attorney, saying you as a tenant are, you know, out of bounds. And, you know, we can apply pressure from the other direction.
Very good. I appreciate the help.
Okay, thank you. So I need two motions. One is to accept the sketch plan as presented this evening, and the second would be to schedule a preliminary hearing for next month's meeting on July 14th. Actually, we could do that as one motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Anna. Is there a second? Second by Andrew. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. You can raise your hand. Aye. Motion's carried.
Aye.
Alright, thanks, Paul.
Great, thank you, everybody. Alan Sorenson, thank you. Goodbye. We'll see you soon, I'm sure. Been a pleasure planning this, doing it all many years. Have a great night, everybody.
You too. Thanks. Next item of all business, John Giannetti, lot line deletion, reapproval.
I don't believe anyone will be here for that one. It's just a reapproval, because it wasn't filed in time.
Right, okay. Anybody have any questions about this application?
Okay.
Hearing none. We do have a resolution of- Alan, would you like to summarize the resolution? Gabby, you'll have to unmute him.
Can you hear me now?
I think they have the option to unmute themselves, I just made them all muted.
Okay Alan, we got you.
You got me, okay. So. This is just a simple lot line adjustment. It's a seeker type two action. And it's between two property, or obviously two properties, but SPL 39.351-7 and 23. And the applicant is John Gianetti. The, I'm just going to read, the board has the resolution, so it's just going to, the, now therefore be resolved, planning board has determined they fully complied with procedural requirements, part 617 of the state environmental quality review law. Further be resolved, townister planning board hereby grants lot line adjustment approval. As described above, the John Gianetti, subject to the conditions, limitations set forth below, one, plan may be filed in the office of the county clerk after signed by the chairman of the planning board. Two, no changes, erasures, modifications, or revision shall be made at any plan after approval by the planning board and endorsed in writing on the plan. Three, the final plan must be filed in the office of the county clerk within 62 days and the final plan is approved by the planning board. And four, all fees including consult fee shall be paid. And that is the resolution for the board's consideration.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a procedural question, do we need to, do we need a motion to declare this a seeker type two, or is that included in the resolution?
That is included in the resolution, but you know, being that you're doing this for Zoom, it wouldn't hurt us to, you know, I would have a motion to classify it as a seeker type two action, is what I thought.
Alright, could I have a motion to declare this as a seeker type two action?
That would be my motion.
That was Larry and seconded by Friday. Okay, discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried, thank you. And I need a motion to accept the resolution as read?
I'll make the motion, Alquist.
I'll second it, Decker.
Okay, motion by Alquist, seconded by Decker. Discussion? We'll do a roll call vote.
Ms. Hainer?
Yes.
Mr. Alquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Stravopoulos? Mr. Mulligan?
Yes. Okay, motion is carried. Thank you. Next item of business is Pest Master. Do we have someone from Pest Master tonight?
Dennis.
Dennis, of course, hi Dennis.
Hello.
Hello.
Sorry, my dog just started barking.
Okay, Dennis, do you just want to update us with the application?
Well, we actually had made all the changes, changes to landscaping, lighting details, signage detail, colored building elevation. And all those changes were made in late March. And of course, there was no meeting in April. And then last month, we weren't aware that we had to be online for the meeting. So we missed, we missed any action at the May meeting, but we would, there's five, five seat shed of drawings, a church site plan had been approved by the board. I think in 2012, this is a smaller use of the site. Pest Master, I think you all know is, you know, on Lucas Avenue in the city of Kingston, near Forest State Park. They need a bigger headquarters and operations center. And they were at the meeting, I think in February or March, presenting their business reasons for move, wanting to move here. But I think we've satisfied all the comments of the county planning board and the town planning board at this point.
Okay. Comments Alan?
Um, yes, I agree with Dennis's presentation. All the previous comments have been addressed by the applicant. We did draft a resolution for the board's consideration, actually for the May meeting. And here again, recommend that the planning board grant site plan approval for the proposed action. Actually, let me clarify, we're gonna, David, this is also for your edification. In the town of Ulster, certain site plans, the planning board approves. Other site plans with more than 2,500 square feet of new development, the planning board plays an advisory role. And so technically, the resolution here is referring this application to the town board with a recommendation that the town board grant site plan approval. And I have the resolution here, so.
Okay, just, if I may, your notes indicated what you need to do a secret determination of non-significance for the neg deck. Should that be separate from the resolution?
Uh, yeah, I would do that, yes.
Okay, alright. If I could have a motion to that effect to neg deck this application?
I'll make that motion, Decker.
Decker, is there a second?
Alquist, second.
Alquist, second, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion's carried. There were some Ulster County Planning Board required modifications. And I'm just wondering if we need to discuss those. I know they were addressed in the resolution, correct Alan?
I, check, it was a light, there was a requirement for a lighting photometric plan. The applicant did provide the lighting specification sheets. They're all international dark sky compliant fixtures. And I think the sentiment of the planning board at the last meeting was to recommend that the town board override the Ulster County Planning Board's required modification for submitting a lighting photometric plan.
Right.
Since the light poles meet the town code requirements and the fixtures are international dark sky compliant.
Right, I agree. Okay. Alright. Then if you would please read the resolution.
Okay, so this is a resolution referral to the town board for conditional site plan approval. Paul Alley doing business as Pest Master. I'm going to, Gary, if, okay with you, rather than reading every bit of it, I'm just going to get to the meat of the, the whereas's. So whereas upon review of the Ulster County Planning Board's required modifications, Town of Ulster Planning Board determined to require the applicant to comply with most other required modifications, but determined to override the requirement for a lighting photometric plan since the light pole meets the town code requirement and the proposed fixtures are international dark sky compliant. Whereas the planning board upon review of the entire record found the proposed action is unlisted action pursuant to the state environmental quality review law. Whereas the planning board upon review of the entire record, including short AF parts one and two, found the proposed action did not have an adverse environmental impact based upon a proposed plan and mitigation measures and recommended that the town board issue a negative preparation pursuant to the seeker regulations. Now therefore be resolved, the planning board has determined they fully complied with the procedural requirements, part 617 of the state environmental quality review law. Further be resolved, the Town of Ulster Planning Board refers this matter to the Town of Ulster Town Board with a recommendation to grant site plan approval of the Pest Master on the above referenced site, subject to the conditions, limitations, restrictions set forth below. One, compliance with applicable zoning and building laws, rules, and regulations. Two, compliance with all representations made by the applicant. Three, compliance with site plan, design plans, and all details as cited herein. Four, the applicant secures Ulster County Health Department approval for proposed septic. Five, town's consulting planner and building inspector are hereby authorized to approve minor site changes of ministerial nature which may arise due to unforeseen circumstances in the project site development. And six, all fees including consult fee shall be paid. And that is the resolution for your consideration.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to accept the resolution as read?
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Alquist. Discussion? Do a roll call vote.
Ms. Hainer?
Yes.
Mr. Alquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Stravopoulos? Chairman Mulligan?
Yes. And motion's carried? Next item of business is combined energy services site plan review. Dennis, is that you also?
Yeah, for Mike Taylor.
Okay.
Again, this has been in front of the board for several months, but this, obviously the April meeting. Think we've made all the changes that the planning board asked with respect to changes to landscape plan, sediment erosion control details and plan, some lighting information, signage information. And the DOT has, it's ready to issue a permit for the entrance pending planning board approval of, actually went to the DOT first and they, they basically preliminarily approved the entrance geometry and location and are just, but they can't issue a permit until you folks act, so. But we're in good stead with the DOT. It's, this is a depot with three 30,000 gallon propane tanks for refueling of their delivery trucks. And so there's, there's really no building or operations on the site except for those occasional trucks refilling for propane deliveries.
Alan, comments?
Yeah, just, you know, this is the site of the former, or a portion of the former Beaver Scraps site, which for years kind of played the, am I, can you hear me? Hey Gary? Yeah, okay. So this, for years the towns are trying to get the site cleared up, so this project actually will be a dramatic improvement to what you've seen over the years on the site. And the, our recommendation is to grant conditional site plan approval for this action. I had prepared a resolution last month. And I just pulled it up on the screen here. So this is very similar to the Kimlin propane facility that was approved about a year ago on Route 28. And this is another one where the county had asked for a lighting photometric plan, but the board again determined that given the limited lighting that was being posed, the fact that the lighting pole meets the town code requirement and the proposed fixture is international dark sky compliant, that would override the recommendation. So while it's contained in the resolution Gary, I think I would recommend that you just have three motions. One, first is classify it as a seeker type two action. Two, to override the Ulster County Planning Board requirement for a lighting photometric plan. And then three, to adopt the resolution as drafted.
Alright, if I could have a motion to declare this a seeker type two?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Motion then seconded, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, motion's carried. Second motion would be to override the Ulster County Planning Board's required modification for a photometric lighting plan for the.
I'm pushed here, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Decker, I'll second it.
Mr. Alquist, seconded by Decker. Mr. Decker, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, that motion's. Carried. And if Alan, if you would read the resolution?
Okay, I'm just going to read the further be resolved, Gary, with your okay?
That's fine.
Okay, so further be resolved, Town of Ulster Planning Board hereby grants site plan approval. Michael C. Taylor with Orchard, with the Orchard of Counter Farm LLC. On the above referenced site, subject to the conditions, limitations set forth below. One, compliance with applicable zoning and building laws, rules, and regulations. Two, compliance with all presentations made by the applicant. Three, compliance with site plan, design plans, and all details decided herein. Four, the applicant secures New York State DOT approval for proposed access to the subject site. Five, the town's consulting planner and building inspector are hereby authorized to approve minor site changes of a ministerial nature which may arise due to unforeseen circumstances in the project site development. And six, all fees including consult fee shall be paid. And that is the resolution for your consideration.
Thank you, could I have a motion to accept the resolution as read?
I'm pushed, I'll make that motion.
Okay, second?
I'll second that.
Hainer, second? Discussion? Roll call vote?
Ms. Hainer?
Yes.
Mr. Alquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Stravopoulos? Mr. Stravopoulos?
I think that was a yes.
That was it, okay. Chairman Mulligan?
Yes. Alright, Andrew said yes, okay. Resolution is carried? Site plan as approved.
Can you hear me, Gabby?
Who's that?
Yeah, it's a bad echo, but I slightly hear you.
Thank you folks.
Welcome.
Thank you Alan for all your good work for the town.
Dennis, thank you.
Pleasure working with you.
Oh, same here, thank you.
Okay, next item of business, Catskill Park Storage, site plan amendment. Dar, would you like to give us an update?
Sure. I hope everybody can hear me.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. So basically, this is our first time in front of the board of the updated, the latest updated plan that we submitted. Going through the list that Alan reviewed, it is, most of the comments have been completed. I believe we.
Gabby, can you hear me?
We have a few.
It's still echoing.
Okay. Just as far as the, you know, a few, a few comments that were pending. Just as far as the, you know, a few, a few comments that were pending, one of them was the traffic circulation. We did show the fire truck maneuver route throughout the site. I'm not sure if the fire chief responded to that or not, but we did demonstrate that a fire truck can actually go through the loop. As far as the utilities, Central Hudson is already onsite. They installed, I believe, at least three utility poles right in front of the existing building there. So, the extension to get electric into the units will, can be done probably above ground with throwing one or two poles and getting the electric there. We can provide that detail when we apply for a building permit and just add that as a, as a detailed plan to show how we're getting electric to the, to those units, if that's acceptable. The signs, we have an existing sign currently onsite. It's the old sign. It's a multi-business type sign, and we're not going to change that. Applicant is not proposing any new signs, so that's why we don't have any details for The controlled entry, the latest plan that we submitted, I know, it's, yep, right there. We are showing a gate, whether it's gonna be like a two swing gate or most likely maybe a sliding gate, it will be easier to deal with, with no removal and stuff, so it's either going to be the gate or camera system that will provide security, or a combination of both. The existing two units by Route 28 of the entrance there currently have cameras, so the, there are security being provided by the owner to try to control motion around these, these units. The rest of the comments are basically erosion and sediment control plan. We did provide that on page three, I believe. Just scroll down just one more page. We showed on, on, this is basically showing where the cell fence is going to go, limited disturbance of, and a construction entrance. On page two, I know the town engineer asked for some finished floor elevations. The building is going to be stepped to follow the existing grade. We're not doing regrading of the site. On page five of that set, I did show a detail for how the foundation is gonna look like right there on the right, and like the building itself with, you know, step every 30 or 40 feet to follow the grade. So, again, to keep the site disturbance into minimum, site has already been disturbed. So, at this stage, the only, the only recommendation was, was, you know, still left over from the engineer review letter was just the idea of trying to, you know, provide some kind of a treatment for the runoff water, but I really don't have a, the grade to be able to do that, and we are already under one acre. The site has been disturbed. We're not changing the imperious, it's just going from gravel to roof, which is the same thing, so I'm not sure if, you know, if we can, you know, I was hoping that we can basically skip that recommendation. Other than that, I'm really hoping that you can give me a conditional file today.
Okay. Comments, Alan?
Um, yeah, this matter, again, has been before the board for several months. There was, I don't want to mischaracterize, but the, the site has been previously disturbed, so there is storage of containers and everything on the portion of the site where the storage units are being proposed. So, the, the new owners of the site have actually cleaned up the site quite substantially. This, where the storage units are being proposed is down gradient from, you know, Route 28, and then there's some significant existing vegetation here, so it's kind of tucked down in a way from the roadway. They meet the bulk requirements of the code, the lighting, fixtures around the storage units are dark sky compliant, lighting levels are very modest, you know, in here, looking at about two foot candles. I do think, you know, this is another one where it's a, the Planning Board has an advisory opinion, it would go to the Town Board with a recommendation. I think you could refer to the Town Board with a recommendation to grant conditional site plan approval, but there are some conditions that need to be addressed. I think the, we need more details in terms of how access is going to be controlled in and out of the storage units. You know, they're showing a gate here, but I think, you know, the applicant should, you know, provide a little more details in that respect. Is it gonna be a passcode? What are the hours of operation that people would be permitted in and out of here? Is it gonna be daylight hours only, or is there, is it gonna be-
It's probably, I mean, it's probably going to be, it is going to be with a passcode. And since it's gated and we have lighting all around it, so really anybody can access this unit anytime as far as they have the code.
Okay, okay, so those are the details that we need. Katara, it's-
We can, I mean, if that's something that we need to put in a note on the final plan that's gonna be, you know, issued to the board to sign, we can always put that on there, just to limit that, or to indicate what are we providing.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Larry Decker. Was the issue of the stormwater ever provided? I didn't hear it, but I've got a bad connection.
I can speak to that. It's Dennis. Katara came and met with me about my comment letter, and I just have to review it with the Town MS 14 to make sure we're all on the same page with respect to it. I, I think the site is already disturbed. They're adding 22,000 square feet of building space, you know, over what's existing hardened gravel lot, so they don't need to do a stormwater pollution prevention plan. We, we had recommended a few, a few voluntary features that so far, I don't think the owner has agreed to, but, but Katara made some, some reasonable arguments as to why they, they might not be feasible here, so if you're willing to leave that open between now and, or as a condition that we sign off with the Town's MS 4 team, you know, on the review of the drainage. Right now, the site sheet drains from, from the rear to the front and into a stream that cuts through the small store building that's also owned by the applicant, used to be the wooden furniture store. This project will really not impact adversely the, the existing conditions. We just recommend they consider a few features that would be, be more water quality friendly features, and it's a difficult thing to collect the sheet flow and get it to a treatment It's not required by the town statute or the state statute, as far as I can tell. So, we haven't signed off on it yet, but I, I met with Katara yesterday morning. He came to my office and reviewed their, their position on it. I respect that, and I think it's an open issue, but there's not much, a lot to discuss. There might be a few small things they can do to, to make an improvement. But they aren't increasing the flow rate off the site, or are they required to treat a water quality volume by, by either town statute or the state statute?
My only thought is, can this be done even if we give a conditional by the board's meeting on Thursday?
Are they meeting this Thursday?
I thought they were. Maybe I'm wrong. Gabby, are they meeting Thursday? Do you know?
Next Thursday.
All right, a week, Thursday.
It could be handled by then.
Yeah, okay. So, the other issue, I think we need to discuss the county planning board's required modifications. Everyone?
Yes.
Let's see that, that list.
Yes.
Regarding the lighting and the requirement for a full photometric plan for the entire site, my personal, is I don't think that's necessary, but I would ask the applicant to consider upgrading the existing lighting on the current buildings to dark sky compliant Maybe you can address that?
I mean, I can always, I know those light fixtures, my understanding, has been put up there by Central Hudson. We can always contact them and see what kind of upgrades they have, whether they have a, you know, more shielded, more full cutoff. This is something I definitely can relate to the client and see what he would be willing to be able to do.
I guess I'm thinking more of the fixtures on the existing buildings. I assume there's, there's lighting on those buildings, although I haven't done a site visit.
I think Gary is with us on the call.
I see, I see him.
I, I don't know, if Gary, can you hear me? If you can just give me your input there on what's on the building.
I don't believe there's any lighting on the building that I can recall. Basically, just the pole lighting provided by Central Hudson. I believe there's a total of five poles with Central Hudson on the fixtures. And I would be happy to revise those to whatever is available from Central Hudson that may be compliant, if possible.
Okay. That would be great. The landscaping plan, there's been some clearing between Route 28 and the site, but obviously the county would like to see as much screening stay. Again, it's been a while since I've been up there. Has there been any more clearing between Route 28 and the, and the vacant land that's there now? Do, do you plan on attending more clearing, or are you gonna leave what's there?
No, we're planning on leaving it as is.
Yeah, okay.
There you go, there's the existing sign.
See if I can see that. So, yeah, there's, there's a couple of trees there depicted. I assume there's more vegetation.
There's a lot more vegetation that's shown on this, on the site plan.
Yeah, that's, that's what I recall. Okay.
Yes.
All right, well then, I think with Dennis firm addressing the soil erosion and sediment plan, if that can be addressed prior to the Town Board meeting, I think the county's required modifications will have been addressed. Alan, do you see any other issues with that?
Um, no, I, as long as they're addressing technical comments, the, of the, of the town designated engineer, I think that would be fine to refer it on to them.
Okay.
That would also be a condition of the town in the resolution.
Right. So, I know you have a referral to the Town Board, a resolution to refer this application to the Town Board with a secret negative declaration, site plan approval. If you would like to-
Yeah, I'll start with the, on the existing, just a quick observation, on the existing single story block building, I, I'm forgetting now whether that was recently painted, the facade was recently painted by the applicant, but if not, you know, it's, that's something that should be considered as a condition, Gary, just to clean up the, the front facade of that existing building.
Mr. Heiner, do you understand?
I do understand the comment. I don't, I think that it's in decent condition. I have not painted it since we purchased it.
Yeah, I think, I think it could use a coat of paint.
If that's a requirement, then we'll, we'll comply.
I would recommend that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right. Any discussion from the board?
What was with the lighting again?
You have some of these pictures here that are pointing out they're not dark sky compliant.
The ones right here, the ones on, on this, on the sheet on your screen here, right?
Yeah.
But Warren, because the, I think it was two months ago, two or three months ago, that there wasn't gonna be any lights on the building at all, right? And then we said, no, you gotta have lights, and, but what, what did we just say before about the lights? That they're not good, that they're not bright enough, that they're not, what is-
No, no, they're, the lighting that they proposed for the new buildings are fine.
Okay, all right, that's, I was confused on that, okay.
Yeah, the, the issue is this existing building, you know, is, it wouldn't take much, you know, a nice clean coat of paint, has to clean up the lines.
Yep, okay.
And, you know, I think Warren can work that out with the, with the applicant, and you know, if you want a color scheme of the, the units, it's, you know, it, it should absolutely be done as part of this. And then these fixtures that I'm pointing out are the ones that, you know, are the old Central Hudson fixtures that just aren't dark sky compliant.
Right.
We all understand that Central Hudson does what they want.
Right. Okay. Yes, if you would, I think the existing building, that would be, that would be very much appreciated by the board, and pass that sentiment on to Warren, who's actually listening, so he knows what we're looking for. And Alan, if you would like to read the resolution referring this matter to the Town Board?
Okay, um, so, Gary, I'd recommend that you, there's gonna be a recommendation in, in the resolution, it's a, the Planning Board upon review of the entire record, proposed action would not have an adverse environmental impact based upon a proposed plan and mitigation measures recommended to the Town Board issue a secret negative declaration. Now therefore be resolved, the Planning Board has terminated fully complied with procedural requirements, Part 617 of the State D O T review law. Further be resolved, Town of Ulster Planning Board refers this matter to the Town Board with a recommendation to grant site plan approval, Catskill Park LLC on above referenced site, subject to conditions, limitations, restrictions set forth below. One, compliance with applicable zoning, building laws, rules and regulations. Two, compliance with all representations made by the applicant. Three, compliance with site plan, design plans, and all details is cited herein. Four, the applicant addresses all technical revisions required by the town designated Four, or five, the, the applicant paints the, the facade of the existing building, which will be subject to the review and approval by the Town Code Enforcement Officer, Building There is, so I'm adding to this on the screen based on the discussion tonight. We also talked about a note should be added and set with respect to the passcode and control of access into and out of the site. Six, town's consulting planner and building inspector are hereby authorized to approve minor site changes of ministerial nature which may arise due to unforeseen circumstances in project site development, and all fees including consultant fees shall be paid. Did I miss anything? They were gonna also upgrade some of the existing fixtures so that they're dark sky compliant, is, I believe that was another condition, Mr. Chairman.
Fixtures, if, if, if they're- Some fixtures if, if, if they're available.
Okay.
If they're available from Central Hudson, right, guys?
Yes.
Correct.
So I will revise the resolution accordingly and also amend the draft resolution for the town board and get that to Gabby.
Okay. So if I could have a motion to accept the resolution as read and amended?
Omquist here, I'll make that motion.
Mr. Omquist? Your second?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Steropoulos?
Can you hear me okay, Gary?
Yes, you're a little, little fuzzy, but we got you. Any discussion?
Thank you.
All right, roll call vote?
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Omquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Stravopoulos?
Yeah.
Chairman Mulligan?
Yes. Thanks. Thank you. And thank you to Mr. Raine for your cooperation and good luck to you.
Thank you very much, guys, I appreciate all your help. Take care.
Thank you for your time and I just want to say to Alan, it's been, I know, a pleasure working with you. You're a very good professional and I enjoyed every moment and every project that, you know, we dealt on with you. We, you know, I wish you best of luck on your next step in your career. Thank you, Darren, my sincere gratitude, thank you. Yep, we'll stay in touch. Okay. All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Good evening. Next item of old business, all about construction, site plan amendment. Comments, Alan?
Um, yeah, I'm going to pull this one up for the board.
All right.
All right, this one, can everyone see this okay?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to go to the site plan. So this, there was the planning, the town board actually approved a larger building on the site several years ago. The applicant came in with a revised plan to build a smaller warehouse. This is less than 2,500 square feet, so it's this time around, the planning board has site plan approval authority. There's an existing house slash office on the site. There is an existing garage and the applicant's proposing to put in a small warehouse, 2,304 square feet. There'll be four lighting fixtures around the perimeter of the building that'll be Dark Sky compliant. These are the fixtures here and pre-lighting fixtures. Parking and circulation, this is Old Route 9W, which is a dead end at this portion. And so here's the site, circling it over here. The building, you know, nice, small building that's being proposed, you know, modest, appropriate for the site. There is, behind the site is the CSX railroad tracks and there's a number of other commercial businesses on, along 9W over here. But this is the site. And so the recommendation is, it is a secret type two action. It's buildings, you know, less than 4,000 square feet. The, I provided the project review comments and there is a draft resolution for the board's consideration, which I'll pull up here in just a moment.
All right. First, I need a, a motion to declare this a secret type two action.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Decker, second?
I'll go for a second.
Okay. Discussion? Always in favor, say aye.
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 Motion to carry. Next, we have the resolution for conditional site plan approval.
So Mr. Chairman, the, the only change in the draft resolution is the applicant has submitted revised lighting specifications that are Dark Sky compliant. And I got to go back now to my project review notes, see what other items I had in there. Do we have the applicant on the line with us, or?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so Carl, with respect to signs, you weren't, were you proposing a sign or no?
No, there will be no signs.
Okay, and with respect to the water, you, you'd court, I believe you already have coordinated with the water department?
I spoke with Mr. Magory quite a while ago about this, probably two years ago. And he suggested I tie into the existing sewer line that's coming out of the office. And then I can grab the water from there too. I'm, I'm going to have a small bathroom in there, just a toilet and a sink.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to recommend is that the, the comment, number four, I'm going to recommend an amendment to the draft resolution to delete number four as it's written and in its place, put that the applicant complies with all requirements of the town's water and sewer departments.
Okay.
And then with that change, you would simply ask for a motion on the resolution as amended.
Okay. Just writing this down, stand by. All right, can I have a motion to accept the resolution as amended?
Omquist here, I'll make that.
Motion.
Okay, Frank was first, I'll take Andrew as a second.
Okay.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Gabby?
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Omquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Stravopoulos? Mr. Stravopoulos?
Yeah.
Okay, Chairman Mulligan?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Somonier, you're all set?
Thank you.
Next item of business, new business, Goodwin Whitaker lot line adjustment.
Here's the resolution as amended. All right, so Goodwin Whitaker.
Go ahead, Alan.
Got it, there you go, Gary, thank you. So this one is a, the applicant is simply looking to consolidate two lots. And so it's a lot line adjustment, does not require a public hearing. It's a secret type two action. And a recommendation is to grant lot line adjustment approval. I'm going to zoom in to the, to the map. So, the, let me go, let me just back up one second here. This, all right, so. Right, okay. So they're consolidating lots and there's a concurrent, little minor adjustment between the lots that's shown in this area here. So. And you're showing, it's kind of hard to see this. Probably confusing everyone. So this is the, this is to address an existing encroachment, by the way, so, you know, that's what's happening here. These lots, this lot and this lot is to be consolidated, so that's the lot line to be deleted. And then as a trade-off between the two property owners, they're going to adjust the boundary here so that they'll pick up this portion where there's currently a shed and some other improvements on the site. So again, pretty straightforward, it addresses an encroachment and, you know, provides a, this other lot, by the way, was just kind of floating out there, landlocked, so it addresses that issue as well.
Correct, okay. Any other questions from the board? All right, hearing none. If I could have a motion to declare this a secret type two action?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Decker?
Second.
Second, Mr. Omquist, discussion? Always in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motions carried. And we have a resolution to approve the lot line adjustment.
Yeah, I'll just go with the further be it resolved, Town of Ulster Planning Board hereby grants lot line adjustment approval. As described above to Norman Goodwin and Christopher and Allison Whitaker, subject to the conditions, limitations, restrictions set forth below. One, plan may be filed in the office kind of clerk after signed by the chairman of the planning board. Two, no changes, erasure, modifications or revisions shall be made to any plan after approval by the planning board and endorsed in writing on the plan. Three, the final plan must be filed in the office kind of clerk within 62 days of the date the final plan is approved by the planning board. And four, all fees including consult fee shall be paid. And that is the draft resolution for your consideration.
Hey, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution as read?
Omquist here, would make the motion.
Thank you. Second?
Uh, second.
Mr. Decker, thank you. Discussion? Roll call vote?
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Omquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Stravopoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Mulligan?
Yes. Thank you. Next item of this.
Thank you. Pesky building inspector. I just don't know when the county's going to open for the filing. So it's 62 days, I'm just worried about if they go beyond that, how we proceed.
I believe they've been taking the maps, but they have to drop them at the security guard in the back.
Okay. It, it seems to me that would be an administrative issue we could handle just within the, within the building department.
I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem extending it due to the circumstances we're under, just so long as we're all aware of that.
Yeah, I, I think that, that would be understood, given, you know, what we're going through.
It's not the only town in the county with that problem.
Yeah.
I think maybe a phone call to Dennis might figure that out.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Jason.
I, I've recorded deeds and maps in the past 30 days, so it shouldn't be an issue. I, there is a Dropbox in behind the county building and the county clerks aren't working, so there may be some slight delay, but I think it can be done in 62 days.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
All right, next item of business, Joseph Emanuel, minor subdivision.
Hi guys, can you hear me, Mike Vitari here?
Yep.
So we are back with Mr. Emanuel. As you guys know, we've been in there previously with site plan work with regards to this site. We are now looking to take a piece of three different parcels, one being lands of Hamilton and Mura, which will convey 0.33 acre to Mr. Emanuel, lands of Wells in the middle here, which will convey 0.229 acre to Mr. Emanuel, and the lands of Gaddy, which will convey 0.345 acre to the lands of Emanuel. As you know, we were, had a tight fit behind the building as it came up with our last site plan we brought in front of you guys a few years ago. This particular lot line revision will open up the back of the building. The issues that we had in the past with proving that we could get a fire truck in there and so on will now be erased as we will be taking much more space in the back. And I think this is a benefit to Mr. Emanuel and to the neighbors as they are, their current lot lines are, are close in terms of Mr. Emanuel's structure.
Okay. Comments, Alan?
Um, can everyone see the shared screen?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, the existing property line is, is pretty close, 41 feet to the rear of the building, so this would, you know, provide a greater buffer. There is kind of a natural separation between the residential area. Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm going by memory, which is always dangerous at this age, but there's, there's change in grade somewhere along here, right?
Yeah, and actually, if you were to visit the site, you will see that what we are proposing to take from those three parcels is basically what is already clear there. So we are not looking to like come in and clear an area or, or, you know, any hardwoods or anything like that. We're kind of following the natural course of what is cleared there already. I would not necessarily go by the Google image, but yes, you, you are close in saying that, but for the majority of what you are seeing, especially the lands of Wells and the lands of Gaddy, that was already cleared once years ago. Joe had proposed this particular lot line revision about maybe 10 or 15 years ago and went ahead and did some work and then never went forward with the lot line revision. So now we're basically just moving forward with conveying what is already cleared and not occupied yet, but what is, what looks to be, what should adjoin the current parcel owned by Joe.
Okay. Um, procedurally, under the town code, it's actually a major re-subdivision because it involves four lots, which just means the planning board cannot waive a preliminary public hearing and has to, it has to hold two public hearings.
With two public hearings, right.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think we have any issue with the, you know, it's not a time constraint issue, so if we have an extra public hearing, that's fine. It would just be me ironing out the explanation to my client as to why we are doing a major re-subdivision versus a lot line revision. I have no problem with following this through as however you guys prescribe. It's just explaining why the zoning code makes this a major re-subdivision versus a lot line adjustment slash revision. It's just explaining why the zoning code makes this a major re-subdivision versus a lot line adjustment slash revision.
Yeah, well, in the town code, the lot line adjustment or lot line revision is between two, two parcels. So this, and then a re-subdivision is adjustment of the boundaries between more than two. So that's where this gets triggered.
Okay.
And the difference between a minor and a major is whether it involves three or four lots and this involves four. So technically, procedurally, legally, we got treated as a major re-subdivision.
And so in terms of a major, are we going to be put through the scrutiny of what a major subdivision would be put through? Or are we going to be able to move along with this as, as if we were to have a lot line revision in front of us?
Uh, the board will, you know, look at.
We're not going to be stuck with doing archaeological studies and all that, are we?
No, just an environmental impact statement. Now, I had it said, you didn't hear that. No, no. No, it's, you're not, you know, you're not proposing any development on the site. So, uh, I mean, it is, you know, pretty straightforward. As, you know, you're adjusting the boundary lines, it's a re-subdivision. And, you know, so that's, that's what the board will look at. So just because it has a title of a major subdivision doesn't mean we're going to put you through, or the town board's going to, or planning board's going to put you to major hoops to, to address this issue.
I'd like to weigh in. Originally, originally he came to us, he wanted to expand his business and the zoning districts are skewed in that particular location because they cut into his property. I just want him aware of that. Because he wanted to expand.
He is aware, Warren, he is aware that, that what he will be conveying will, what they will be conveying to him will not be commercial property. He is aware of that and he does not have any plans for structures there at all. So whether it's residential, commercial, however he likes to handle it, he is just looking to add space on there and is not proposing any kind of structure whatsoever.
Understand, I just, I have to, I have to cover all the avenues. I appreciate that. And as long as he's looking at what he's looking at, we're fine.
We, we spoke of this, Joe and I spoke of this ourselves. We're both aware that, you know, the zoning districts change there. And, you know, he won't be able to develop that piece in terms of a commercial piece of property. But it's basically going to be, in all essence, vacant land.
I don't understand the zoning in that district myself, but as long as he's aware of it, I'm fine.
And, and to be honest with you, it is kind of up to interpretation, that particular zoning line there. No two maps or no two systems show it in the same place. But we do know that we are dealing with what is currently occupied as residential and what is currently occupied as commercial as two differ, um, you know, we're, we're going to be adding residential land to a commercial property, but we will be not proposing any development in that area.
Unless, down board, okay. I understand.
Well, you know, my, my, my take is I always have to keep in mind that if 10 years from now, that property's sold and the new owner wants to then develop that portion of their property to expand their business, then that's always can be an issue. Something that, you know, boards have to keep in mind. And of course, a board 10 years from now isn't going to know the circumstances and the thinking that we have gone through. So that's always an issue in my mind, but.
You know, we can put notes on the plat, we can put deed restrictions. I mean, there's ways to handle that, you know, to perpetuate for the future. So I mean, however you guys would want to go about that, that's no problem. If you want a note on the map saying, you know, that, that land is to remain residential or however you plan on, you know, handling that.
It could be, yeah.
You know, move forward with.
That would be something I would like to see.
All right, I think the maps should delineate the zoning districts.
Yeah, those are shown here, but I agree, there should be notes that clearly spell that out.
Okay. So you'll make that happen, Mike, right?
Yeah, as long as you guys give me the verbiage, I have no problem. I'd, I'd like to have it on there and set up before we have our first public hearing, this way we can, you know, solidify that it happened.
Right, sure.
That we made the change.
That shouldn't be a problem. Okay. This is a secret unlisted action. I need a motion for a negative deck.
I'm pushed here, I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you. For a second.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Decker, thank you. Discussion. Hearing none. Someone try to say something? Go ahead.
Question, my question is, the representatives of each lot must sign an owner's consent to file. Has that been accomplished?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, we just need that. Gabby, just make sure you have that in file.
I do have it, yes.
Okay.
We covered all those bases with, with Mr. Emanuel back about a month ago. And as a matter of fact, all those, all those particular representation forms were actually signed in front of the attorney who will be closing the deal. So he actually handled all that and sent them over to me.
You're the best, Mr. Vitari. Your father would be proud of you.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. Secondly, we need a motion to accept the sketch plan as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Hainer, was there a second from Mr. Alquist?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Discussion. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion's carried. And thirdly, need a motion to set a preliminary plat hearing for next month's meeting, July 14th.
I will make that motion, Mr. Chairman. Are we going to recommend a negative deck?
Yeah, that was, we did that, that was the first motion.
Yeah.
I second the motion about July 14th.
All right. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alan, did I miss anything?
I think you covered it, Gary. It's a, so he'll come back with, you know, notes on the plat. I can send you and Gabby some proposed language for that. If needed.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you, guys. Alan, if I don't see you anytime soon, thank you for your time, your professionalism. Good luck in your endeavors.
Hey, thank you. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, final item for this evening is minor re-subdivision. Ms. Rua, thank you for your patience, you sat through this entire meeting.
I know, I was last on the list, but that's okay.
Okay. So Alan, comments?
This one's pretty straightforward. It's two lot minor re-subdivision. I'm going to go to the plat. So the proposed action is to create the slot line. And you see that little shed, that's to be relocated.
Yeah, that's going to get pushed back.
Yeah, and so there is, they're creating two lots, each of the lots will comply with the zoning district regulations. This is in the R40 district, which has a minimum lot size requirement of 60,000 square feet. And so the new.
I'm sorry, what it, we're in R60, right?
Um, R60, I'm sorry, it's my, it's my old eyes.
That's okay, I have those too.
I'm squinting, so. Yes, R60 and hence the 60,000 square foot lot. So each of the lots more than meets the minimum lot area requirement. This one is, will remain 10 acres and this new lot will be 3.32 acres. So recommendation is to classify the proposed action as a minor re-subdivision. Class, Gabby, if we've already done some of these steps, feel free to jump in. Classify the proposed action as a secret unlisted action. Grant sketch plan approval. Waive the requirement for preliminary plat public hearing, which we can do because it's a minor subdivision. And schedule this matter for a final plat public hearing. And Mr. Chairman, you could ask for a motion to take these actions. Can everyone see this, that what I have on the board?
You didn't need to take all of those actions tonight, we haven't done any of them.
Okay. One motion to take those actions if you'd like.
Okay, so I assume everyone can see those five actions that we're going to vote on this evening?
Yes.
Okay. Good, then can I have a motion to take those actions as, as you have listed there on, on your screen?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
It's wrong quest second. Any discussion? Okay, and the, the next, the meeting would be the next meeting, July 14th for the final plat public here. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion's carried.
Aye.
Okay. All right.
All set?
All set. We'll see you next month.
Okay, thanks.
Hopefully not on Zoom, but who knows?
I know, I know.
All right. So we have one discussion item. I can get my note. Warren, what was the discussion item that we talked about?
Kingston Tires doing sanitizing.
Right, 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 yeah. So, so what's the issue there?
Kingston Tires was previously approved for tire changing, new tires. They want to sanitize vehicles. And my only concern is, are, A, is it allowed under their original approval? And B, are they going to CDC be approved?
So they want to detail vehicles?
Correct.
Okay. So my first question, I guess, is it within our purview as a planning board to somehow ensure that they are sanitizing vehicles in the process of conducting their business?
Well, ultimately, it would fall to me. I just want to make sure they can do it under their original approval. And then I'll have to deal with, are they doing it as per requirements?
Okay. Jason, any thoughts?
Yes. You know, I think that this would be under this, in the discretion of the building inspector. If he believes that it is allowed use in that zoning district, he can allow it or disallow it. And then if there's an issue, he can be, Kingston Tire can appeal that to the zoning board. So I'm not sure if this board really is a proper board to consider that request.
I had that same thought. Okay. Warren, does that help you at all?
I don't have anything else to do except run around town and figure out if they're complying with the state mandate. So I don't have a problem with ensuring they're complying with the state mandate.
Okay.
So Warren, is the, is the issue whether they're going to be social distancing there? Or is it the actual, the use, whether that's allowed or not?
My concern is that they're going to detail the vehicle, but are they going to leave the vehicle in less compliance with state mandate than they found it? Because we do have the CDC requirements with new vehicles and everything else that they have to sanitize when they touch the vehicle.
Did you discuss that with them? Do they know that's part of the, what they're up against?
I have not discussed that with them yet because I wanted to get the board's feel on whether it was part of their original approval.
All right.
Warren, are this the requirements for the COVID sanitization or is this normal cleaning process?
Well, ultimately, that would come down to what I decide. I've been tasked with a lot of things and most recently is compliance with whatever the, the state decides.
Well, I've crawled through a number of the, the state requirements for sanitizing and that sort of thing, just looking for things, not on purpose, but they just happen to be there. And there's tons and tons of requirements and regulations that called out in the, in the state laws handling the, the infection. So I don't know what their sanitization process includes, whether it's going to be that or whether they're going to be worrying about the, the chemicals that fall on the ground.
Well, it applies to both. I mean, you have CDC rules which state, you know, the vehicle sanitized. When you get to what falls out of the vehicle, that's a whole nother set of regulations. So I have to monitor both.
I personally think this is a health department question, not a planning board question. My opinion.
Here's my problem, the health department, as far as I know, is still not staff. Last time I contacted them, they didn't have any field agents. So there was nobody out there to enforce this. So consequently, it fell to me.
Well, I would think the sanitization of a vehicle would be pretty much like sanitizing an outdoor table after somebody gets done eating there. And wipe it down with alcohol or something and that's it.
Except for the fact that the state hasn't, the state has given us a lot of guidelines for all the businesses that are opening. They have not addressed this one directly. So am I supposed to interpret other regulations?
Maybe do it just like you would a car dealership. We bought a car and they had it completely sanitized, wheel covers, everything done before we even purchased it.
I actually had to go to a car dealership today to decide how many people were allowed in the building. So I know exactly what you're talking about. As well as three hair salons and two retail businesses. So I'm very familiar with, I'm supposed to keep up to date on all of this because I don't have a lot of help from state health or county health.
Yeah, unfortunately, I, I don't think it's a planning board issue, but I clearly understand your concern. It's crazy.
Yeah, I think it falls under the health department and then you're winging it.
I just, I just wanted it out there that if you don't have an issue with it, I will deal with it best I can and we'll move forward. And while I have you all, I'm going to bring up another issue. Um, Kingswood Plaza. We may not be familiar with it, they started with a two-story building, they went to a one-story building, now they want a one and a half story building. I guess we're all familiar with what I'm talking about only because I got to deal with it. So their question is, does it go back to planning?
I would say yes.
Yes, they would have to. I think planning board needs to, yeah, planning board needs to.
Sure, I think the elevation's going to change. Yeah.
Yeah, they have.
Marketing requirement changes, right? Yeah.
That, that was exactly my take on it and that's where I was headed with it, but since I had you all here, I would present it.
Well, you're, uh, you're correct. Okay. All right, I have one last thing to go back to campers world and the lighting, is, is there some kind of, um, fines that can be levied for non-compliance? What can the building department do to kind of get them to step up, come to the table anyway?
Okay, if, if you're not familiar with the building department, we are known for closing businesses for non-compliance. So I will go back to them and present to them that they need to present to us their proposed plan and how they propose to correct the situation. I have already done that, they have not complied. So I will revisit the local manager and present it to him again.
May I, may I suggest you discuss that with the supervisor first?
I already have.
Okay, I just didn't want to keep him out of that loop.
I never keep him out of the loop.
I'm sure you don't. Very wise to do that.
Extremely, trust me.
Okay. All right.
That's helped me to tell it's a broken record, but what about the light at the Kingston Block and Mason Street? It blinds you coming down, uh, East Chester or was it, whatever that road is, 9W.
East Chester Street bypass.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I know I've brought it up a million times before, but it's still so bright, it's bright in your eyes when you're driving down that road.
FYI, we have renamed my department the complaint department. If you have an issue, you call us first and we will address it.
Well, that was going to be addressed with a facade change, which hasn't happened, so.
Exactly, it never, they never came back after we told them everything we wanted.
Right.
Well, I did manage to get, um, the diner, Kings Valley Diner is now coming to us after the fact to get the facade changed, just like we did with the Marriott. So now I will address them and they will come to us and we can address that also.
Okay. Yeah, I just, uh, I don't understand why if someone wants to change the color of the building, it has to come before the planning board. It seems to me you are certainly capable enough to decide whether, you know, the color is right, you know, certainly we don't want pink or something like that, but, um, I, I, that's just a personal opinion, but.
Uh, Gary, you don't know that we call it the Popeye's Rule Amendment?
Yes.
Due to the fact that the color they chose for that building and that's where this all started.
Okay. But if they had to come before you, you would keep it from becoming pink or orange or whatever, right?
Absolutely.
That's all right.
I would, I would, no, no, no apologies necessary, which is why when Marriott changed her colors twice without talking to us.
And, you know, the Marriott building looks great, that, that's, you know, they were, I think they were, you know, it's a nice, nice design, change of color, whatever, but.
You, you are correct, but in my position, I have to be fair and equal, so I have to have everybody present it.
Absolutely, right.
I cannot pick and choose who gets to decide. And when I explain that, they all understand.
Of course, right. No, that's how it should be. All right, any other items for discussion before we adjourn?
There's one that keeps coming up and, and the Emanuel situation brought it out again. When zoning went through, most, uh, properties against the highway were some number of feet back as commercial and behind that it was residential or whatever else was behind it. And a lot, and there are many, many properties in the town where the front half of the property is zone commercial and the back half is residential.
Yeah.
And it creates a real mess. I know a number of years ago, one of the towns in the southern part of the county was able to get a grant to get that straightened out. It took a while, but it was well worth it in the long haul for everybody concerned. Parcels on Morton Boulevard, for example, are that way, the side away from the railroad tracks are, uh, have, half of it's commercial in the front and the, and the back half is, is all residential.
So Frank, you're ask, you're asking for a modification to the zoning, if I'm not mistaken?
It's definitely the zoning map.
Yeah, the zoning map amendment.
It, it's a big, big job.
Oh, absolutely, I agree, I went through this in Chandaiken, so I know exactly what you're talking about.
And I just thought about, you're, what's, what's the status of our digital sign law in the town? Do we, is that, is that ever going to get finalized because, uh, we've seen that get more and more people thinking they can put digital signs up? Um, I know that's going to be an issue with the gentleman who's going to put the laundromat on Ulster Avenue. And he owns those billboards and he thought he could put digital signs there and we told him no, but there's really no law yet, right?
I gave language to, uh, the supervisor probably six, eight months ago, I worked with the, uh, chairman of the zoning board and we've worked all that through. And Jim said we would deal with it when we are ready and I guess they haven't had a board meeting to where they want to sit down and discuss it.
Okay.
Well, now you have, now you have me, so I can reach out to both board chairmans, Gary and, and Jeffrey, and we can't see if we come to an agreement about this because the last, uh, digital sign on Hurley Avenue came back with requirements from county and that they approved it per se, but it should follow our code, which we don't have.
That was CrossPoint, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Well, Jeffrey and I talked about it back when, you know, when we had timely signs do the demo and, um, I mean, I thought it was a done deal, but that was, that was last year, more than a year ago. All right, I just wanted to put that out there. We should, it would, it would be helpful to have a, a law, have it in code.
When the apocalypse is over, I'll try to look into it further.
Okay, that'll be, what, next year?
The way it's drawn, yeah.
It'll be later this year, trust me, take care of it.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Thank you, everyone, um, hopefully maybe next month we'll have a regular meeting in person.
That would be good.
That would be bad.
That would be good.
It would be good. Technology's a wonderful thing, but it has its limits.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It's got better as we went along.
So Alan, once again, uh, thank you so much for all you've done, it's been a real pleasure working with you and good luck to you, uh, as chairman of the planning board for Orange County. Did I say that right?
Uh, Commissioner of Planning and, yes, thank you.
Commissioner of Planning, okay.
You will be missed, Alan.
Yes, you will.
Well, thank you, I'll miss everyone there and it's been a real pleasure, uh, working with each of you and, uh, I'll miss the work as well because it's, uh, it's been very rewarding, uh, over the years to work with each of you and we've had some good projects come through and, uh, I think made a difference, you know, it's, uh.
Is there any land down there left to build on now that you have the, uh, Lego land and, you know, all that other stuff?
Oh, yeah, there's still quite a bit of land there. Uh, challenge is going to be managing it and, uh.
Yeah.
And, and I think there's going to be both Ulster and, and Orange is going to be considerable pressure for, um, single-family residential development again with folks wanting to get out of the city.
Yeah.
I would imagine.
Hundred percent.
Right, sure.
I grew up in Townham, Minnesota, there's a lot of land out there.
Ah, yeah, a lot of solar farms now too.
Yeah, oh yeah, there are, yeah.
Yeah.
Alan, is that the reason for the tie?
Yes, yes, I'm looking at the clock so I can drop the tie.
Okay.
Let's let them go.
Correct.
Alan, good luck to you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thanks for everything.
Yeah.
You're welcome, I appreciate the opportunity, that's all.
Thank you.
Good luck. Motion to adjourn.
Second that motion.
Second, all right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, stay well over.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a good night, everyone.
Have a good night, everyone.
Yeah.